Good morning. I'd like to call the order of the joint meeting of the Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission and the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners. Would you stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare, among United States of America, we consider the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Has the invitation for a citizen's citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed? Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda? Item assigned in prior to the start of the meeting. Any requested action items will be scheduled at a future meeting. Is there anybody that would like to schedule? Is there anybody that would like to schedule? Hearing none. Move on to number four. Disclosure of conflicts of interest, relationship to applicant, ex parte communication. Is there any? Hearing none. We'll convene as Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission and the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners.
Do we have approval of the agenda?
Second.
And also do have approval of the agenda by the county commission.
Second.
Get a motion and second.
A joint public hearing. Oh, this is right. I gotta read this. Brookings County Planning.
We have a motion and a second by the Planning and Zoning Commission and also by the county commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried.
Brookings County Planning Commissioners, a nine-member commission whose function is to recommend approval and disapproval of land use, plan, zoning ordinances, subdivision plaits, and amendments thereof to the Brookings County Commission. The commission makes its recommendation based upon the adoptive comprehensive plan for the physical development of the unincorporated areas of Brookings County. As a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. After a motion is moved and seconded, it is open for debate. Those supporting the motion shall in turn give their reasons. Those opposing the motion shall then offer their reasons. After everyone has been given a chance to be heard, the commission shall recommend approval or disapproval based on the testimony and information presented. A simple majority vote of a quorum of members of the Planning and Zoning Board in attendance is required to forward the recommendation. Joint public hearing of ordinance 2021-08, an ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 4.02, Commercial/Industrial Districts, Section 4.02.02, adopted by ordinance 2018.03. An ordinance to add Article 3, Section 3.03.02, prohibited uses. An ordinance to add Article 5, general requirements. An ordinance to add an Article 2 definition.
At this time, before you open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna go ahead and read the ordinance. I'll start where you stopped. Be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Brookings County, South Dakota, that Chapter 3.03.02, application of district regulations of the zoning ordinance of the Brookings County, be adopted by adding the following section, Section 3.03.02, prohibited uses. All uses and structures not specifically listed as a permitted use or as a conditional use in a particular zoning district shall be prohibited in said district. Be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Brookings County, South Dakota, that Section 4.02.02 CI, Commercial/Industrial Districts, conditional uses of the zoning ordinance of Brookings County, be amended by adding language, paragraph 21, cannabis dispensaries subject to Chapter 5.17. Be it further ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Brookings County, South Dakota, that Article 5, general requirements of the zoning ordinance of Brookings County, be adopted by adding the following chapter, Chapter 5.17, cannabis dispensaries. Number one, maximum number of cannabis dispensaries. Paragraph A, in the development of execute and execution of these regulations, it is recognized that there are some uses which because of their very nature are recognized as having serious objectionable operational characteristics, particularly when several of them are concentrated under certain circumstances thereby having a potential dilatory effect upon the adjacent area. Special regulation of these uses is necessary to ensure that these adverse effects will not contribute to the blighting or downgrading of the surrounding neighborhood. The primary control or regulation is for the purpose of preventing a concentration of these uses in any one area. B, the county shall allow up to five cannabis dispensaries provided the time, place, and manner of said dispensaries comply with this ordinance. Number two, required separation distances. A, a cannabis dispensary shall be located not less than 1,000 feet from a public or private school existing before the date of the cannabis dispensary application. B, prescribed separation setback distances from certain existing uses are to be measured from the lot line of the property where the dispensary is proposed. Three, other locational requirements. A, permanent or temporary dispensaries are prohibited in all other zoning districts and not eligible for a home occupation use. B, it shall be unlawful to operate a dispensary in a building which contains a residence or a mixed-use building with commercial and residential uses. Number four, controlled access. No cannabis establishment shall share premises with or permit access directly from another medical cannabis establishment, business that sells alcohol or tobacco, or if allowed by law, other cannabis establishment. Number five, hours of operation. A, cannabis dispensaries are allowed to be open between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Monday through Saturday in the hours of 12:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Sunday. Number six, documentation of state licensure. A, no cannabis dispensary shall acquire, possess, store, deliver, transfer, transport, supply, or dispense cannabis, cannabis products, pep- pepper, penuria without providing documentation of licensure from the state of South Dakota. Number seven, the zoning official is authorized to issue permits for building slash use for cannabis dispensaries subject to the following. A, submission of a site plan containing the following, any information required for the applicable building permit, ingress and egress plan, parking plan, lighting plan including security lighting, screening slash security fencing plan, all entrances to the facility shall be secure and appropriate security measures to deter and prevent theft of any medical marijuana. A refuge plan, waste of marijuana remnants and byproducts shall be located in a secure container located within a secure area with the facility and disposed of in a manner which is compliant with the Department of Health Regulations and Permits. Hours of operation. Any other information as lawfully may be required by the zoning official to determine compliance with this ordinance. And B, documentation of ability to meet setback slash separation requirements. C, documentation of state licensure. Number eight, all cannabis establishments are required to be constructed in conformance with the 2021 edition of the International Building Code and International Fire Code, which we'll discuss later. Be it further ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Brookings County, South Dakota, that Article 2 definitions of the zoning ordinance of Brookings County be adopted by adding the following definitions. This ordinance adopts the definitions for cannabis-related terms which are defined by South Dakota Codified Law 34-20G-1, cannabis or marijuana, cannabis cultivation facility, cannabis dispensary, cannabis establishment, cannabis product manufacturing facility, cannabis products, cannabis testing facility, and department. Adopted this blank day of blank 2021 effective. Brookings County Board of Commissioners by Larry Jensen, chairperson, attested by Lori Schultz, Finance Officer, Brookings County. First reading, September 7, 2021. Second reading will be September 21, September 21, 2021. And it will be adopted on September 21st, 2021, and will become effective October 20, 2021. End of statement.
At this time, we're ready to open the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Hearing seeing none. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Dietrich, second.
Second.
Second by Ericson. Call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Troyan.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
Ericson.
Aye.
Storehog.
Aye.
N. Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Brookings County Board of Commissioners hold the first reading ordinance 2021-2021-08, an ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 4.02, Commercial/Industrial Districts, Section 4.02.02, adopted by ordinance 20-18-03, an ordinance to add Article 3, Section 3-03-02, prohibited uses. An ordinance to add Article 5, general requirements. An ordinance to add Article 2 definitions. Do I have a motion to approve?
First reading.
We had.
It's just the first reading.
Yeah.
I think we do the changes later. Do you want to do them now?
Perhaps we should talk about them while you're thinking about the proper procedure. That'd be, would you like me just to summarize?
You can, yeah.
Okay. The ordinance is based on SDCL, Chapter 34-20G, and after we had drafted everything, we realized that everything throughout that chapter of the code, when it talks about cannabis dispensaries, talks about medical cannabis dispensaries. As everybody would be aware, there are two types of cannabis dispensaries, one for recreational marijuana, which is not approved in the state of South Dakota, and one for medical. And one of the suggestions is everywhere we say cannabis dispensary, we put the word "medical" in front of it on our ordinance. So for example, where it says Chapter 5.7, cannabis dispensaries on the ordinance, it would read Chapter 5.17, Medical Cannabis Dispensaries. And that would just make our ordinance match up with the South Dakota law that governs medical marijuana dispensaries. Then on page, on the second page, item number seven, it says the zoning official is authorized to issue permits. That is the language that came down from First District for special exceptions. Brookings County does not use special exceptions. We only use permitted uses and conditional uses. And we need to put something in there. I'm proposing this, but whatever, if somebody thinks it should be better. The applicant shall submit to the zoning official a site plan containing the following. Because Bob would not be authorized to issue a permit until it comes in front of you and you say yes. That has to happen first. And the way this ordinance reads, it sounds like he has authority to do it without it going through planning and zoning. So that just would make it comply with what our rules and regulations are. And then item number eight, we do not use the International Fire Code in Brookings County. And so that should not be in this ordinance. That shouldn't be there. Those are the things that I would be recommending. I'm not making a motion because I don't think that's appropriate at this time, but the changes that we make just kind of clean up the ordinance a little bit. I guess the last thing is on the definitions. The county already went through and on our licensing ordinance, we made the definitions match the, how they were titled in the statute, and then we put them in alphabetical order. And I'm proposing that in this ordinance, they match the licensing ordinance so that everything that we're doing looks the same as relates to definitions. And none of that do I think is really a substantive change in the ordinance. The last thing I'd like to talk about would be, and it's going to be a policy decision and everybody will have to decide how they want to proceed on that. There was a meeting with the city regarding joint jurisdiction. As you know, and we're having a meeting tonight at 7 o'clock, right? We don't have our joint jurisdiction ordinance all in place yet. And so we fall back on the joint jurisdiction ordinance that was passed, I think, in the 70s. And in that ordinance, it says that any zoning issues will be governed, and Bob, correct me if I'm not saying this quite right, will be governed according, in the joint jurisdiction area, will be governed according to the city's zoning rules unless they're ag-related.
That's correct.
Okay. And the city is going to be voting on their ordinance tonight, and they put in their ordinance that there would be no medical cannabis dispensaries. Actually, I think they're putting in no medical marijuana establishments. And you all may be aware, there are four types of establishments. Brookings County is only looking at the one we're required to right now. There are testing, manufacturing, dispensaries, and production. Okay? And they're putting in their ordinance that there will be none of those in the joint jurisdiction area because the city is of the opinion that they do not have statutory authority to issue a license for cannabis in the joint jurisdiction area. And the reason they're taking that position is there's nothing in the statute that authorizes it when it comes to alcohol. For example, if there was going to be a bar in joint jurisdiction, city doesn't have authority to do a liquor license. The county commission would have to do that in the joint jurisdiction area. And the city thinks that that is the way it will be on cannabis. We don't know because the statute doesn't address that. The city has asked us if we would be willing to put in our ordinance a provision that says there will be no medical cannabis establishments in the joint jurisdiction area. And then as we work through our joint jurisdiction ordinance, we can figure that out and do it properly. So those are the things that I was suggesting. And I don't know the procedure for, to follow.
Well, I would just make those changes and then it'll be reflected in the second reading.
Is that satisfactory with everybody?
Do you want to handle both of those a little bit separately? The second part of it as far as the joint jurisdiction area, do you want to handle that separately? Or do you want to just make those changes anyway? I mean, we've had no discussion on the second one. We have on the first, and I concur that those changes are necessary. On the second one, where the city says we don't have any jurisdiction or don't believe we have jurisdiction, much like liquor licenses, then it falls back to the county under their rules. And we've said five, so that would include the joint jurisdiction area. Is that correct?
Well, under Commissioner Pierce's proposal, no, it wouldn't.
So then the joint jurisdiction area would not allow any medical.
Correct.
Which I think is maybe a little restrictive and would be challenged because there may be in the joint jurisdictional area some places that would happen. It, you know, it's not going to happen if it's not on ag, and if it's on ag, it doesn't, we don't pass it because it has to be in commercial. If it's commercial, it falls back to the city under their zoning ordinance. So this is kind of a no man's land in the joint jurisdictional area, and I would guess somewhere along the line that might be challenged, to take in an area and take it completely out, both jurisdictions.
Well, and I think that's a reasonable opinion. And like Commissioner Pierce said, I mean, I think every member's gonna have to make that decision when they vote on whether or not. So I, yeah, I would take up that motion to change the heading to exclude joint jurisdiction. I don't know if everyone's prepared to necessarily take that on today, so maybe at the second reading, I think that would probably be appropriate.
Make it, make an amendment at the second reading.
Right.
Give us a chance to put the wording together.
Right.
To do it properly. Then I don't have a problem with that. I just, I want to treat those as two separate issues, not the same issue. Thank you.
Uh huh.
We need a motion from the Planning and Zoning Board recommending those changes that were just read?
Not necessarily, no. We'll provide a copy of the changes prior to the next, or the, prior to the second reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Like the, this is the first reading. The second reading will be on September 21st, 2021.
Is that a joint meeting again then? Okay.
The zoning board can go ahead and finish up.
Okay, so we need, okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Vanderwall, second. By Jensen. Okay, we will be adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you want to shuffle?
I don't know.
I did submit a whole thing, the things that I missed in the report. There's a PPCC meeting September 9th at noon. I just passed out a small business administration document because of the drought. Dual county to our north has been declared a major drought area, and since we're a surrounding county, this is not for farmers. Farmers need to go through the Farm Service Agency for drought assistance. This is for small businesses that do work with farmers. And in case they're hit by the drought somehow, supply companies and stuff like that, they'd be eligible. And if they have any questions, they can call my office, 696-8350, and we'll be more than happy to share that information with them. The, this is National Preparedness Month, September 30th, we're going to have a big event, well, what we call a big event. We'll set up our disaster kits down on the first floor of this particular building. We'll pass out drinks, and we have a door prize for severe weather radio for anyone that wants to visit and sign up for that. And at the last meeting, you asked me for some numbers from the U.S. Census Bureau, and I, Mr. Sampson made me a nice map, which I included in my staff report. And you can see throughout the townships, some, some of the townships would actually surprise you, such as Madera Township seeing a decrease in population. They lost six people. It's not like it's, not like it's a humongous thing, but still, they did see a decrease. Some townships got hit pretty hard. Brookings Township is one of them, and Oak Lake. And then you've got the winners of the game, such as Lake Hendricks, they saw an increase of 26%. Laketham is a, is a, it's a hidden one. Laketham Township itself saw a small decrease of six individuals, but the Lake Pontet area itself saw an increase. So, and one thing that this does not show is the Hutterite colonies. If we was undercounted anywhere in Brookings County, it was our Hutterite colonies. And I don't know how to, how to fix that. Well, this year, obviously, you can't fix it because it happened last, last year. But, so we, if we was undercounted anywhere, it would have been the Hutterite colonies, just from the numbers that I saw. But theoretically, they should be included in the township numbers, and the townships that most of them are in didn't get hit real hard. So, any questions on the numbers themselves? And I think we also had the map that showed the small towns that we discussed.
Bob, when you, on the township map, if we could have that back up for a minute, that does not include, and that's outside of municipalities, is that correct?
That would include, yes, ma'am.
And then, does it include Lake Park District?
Yes.
It does include that, but not municipalities?
Yes.
So in Brookings Township and in Volga Township, would, would those decreases be attributable to how much annexation the two cities have done during the last decade?
Definitely in Volga. Because they've got those subdivisions there. And Aurora, again, you know, the city of Aurora, you can, you can see the difference there just by looking at like the city of Aurora. I mean, the township of Aurora only saw 1.36% increase, but if you look at the municipality map, the city of Aurora jumped up 89.1%. So, yeah. Census numbers concentrate on the, on the non-municipal areas. And, and the reason we, we think the Hutterite colonies are undercounted is they, they, they put out a little thing on, on different numbers, and, and they call them areas or something. And it just looked like they was low, low to me. So next year, I've been in Brookings County now for three census. I was a college student working part-time in 20, in 2000 when we had the census. In 2010, obviously, I was the main planner. In 2020, I was a planner. I don't know if I'll be around for the 2030 census or not, but hopefully, I'll leave a note for my predecessor to make sure that they hit those Hutterite colonies nice and hard, and, and there's ways of accessing them. But it may not be just to walk in the front door and knock on the door. You may have to go through different agencies to get in there. And that's something I would, you know, if, if there was an after-action report on this 2020 census for me, that's what it would be after, after seeing the numbers. Now, when they was here, they did the best they could. They contacted our office and asked for where people live and all that. So, any other questions on the census itself? And other than that, I'm going to go, go on the radio. It is this week's National Preparedness Week thing is to prepare a kit. And if anything, if you get anything from the news in the last week with that hurricane that hit Louisiana, if you had a five-gallon pail next to your front door, and you got water starting to come in your front door, if you'd have grabbed that five-gallon pail and took off, at least you have medicine for, for a couple of days and things like that. That's, that's the message for this week that I'm going to go on the radio and push. Prepare a kit. I don't care what your kit's got in it, the stuff that you need for you and your family. Put it in a five-gallon bucket, put a lid on it. You know, you can, you can use it to sit on if you have to, if you're in an emergency shelter. I realize Brookings, we're pretty, we think we're in a bubble, and we, we don't get affected by these things. But look at my staff report. I mean, we sent out severe weather warnings in the past month. We've had, we've had severe rain at one time. We had two and three inches in portions of the county. We didn't have it throughout. The problem is, we haven't had it in the whole county. It's always hit and miss. Our hail, thank goodness, has been pea-sized hail, basically, you know? But there's been places in South Dakota that has had golf-ball-sized hail, if not larger, in the last, last month. So, it's coming. That's all I can say. And of course, I've been saying that now for 20-something years, and I guess I'll keep saying it until I retire. So, any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Marty?
Morning.
Morning.
Stacy, do we want to go over the meal plans? Okay, in your packets, you probably had the food bid comparisons. And I guess at this time, we're recommending for Trinity. But, as the commissioners had a chance to review those comparisons? With Trin-
Wooden, a, a bridge with a wooden deck there that's a, a single car bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just curious as part of what we're doing in the Sinai Road, is anybody taking a look at that bridge and make sure everything is?
We did do some work to the, I know this doesn't answer the question as far as the bridges, but we tried in order to alleviate some of the issues that I probably knew that we were going to have there. We did do a lot of work on two sixteenth earlier this year, you know, to promote, uh, people to use that road. Um, as far as, you know, the road goes itself, it's a township road. I know it's our structure. It's posted accordingly.
The road is, the road is fine.
I know, but the, the structure is posted accordingly. That's, you know, it's, it's posted at six tons.
Okay. And we don't need to be looking at it, making sure. It, it was the wooden deck thing that was of interest.
But it, uh, it gets, you know, annually ins- or biannually inspected. So I, I, that's the best I can answer right now.
Thank you.
I guess I just make sure the posting signs on the bridge are in good shape because they're usually.
Shot up.
Yeah, but.
Yeah. But they are there.
So somebody real- doesn't go over it with a.
Yeah.
Vehicle.
And there's limiting factors there with width and that. So, you know, that, that, uh, helps keep the machinery off of it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Lori?
Nothing today. Thanks.
Bob?
Good morning. I did submit. Whole thing, the things that I missed in the report. There's a PPCC meeting September ninth at noon. I just passed out a small business administration document because of the drought. Dual County to our north has been declared a major drought area. And since we're a surrounding county, this is not for farmers. Farmers need to go through the Farm Service Agency for, for drought assistance. This is for small businesses that do work with farmers. And in case they're hit by the drought somehow, supply companies and stuff like that, they'd be eligible. And if they have any questions, they can call my office at six nine six eight three five oh, and we'll be more than happy to share that information with them. The, uh, this is National Preparedness Month, September thirtieth, we're gonna have a big event. Well, what we call big event. We'll set up our, our disaster kits down on the first floor of this particular building. We'll pass out, uh, drinks and we have a door prize for severe weather radio for anyone that wants to visit and sign up for that. And at the last meeting, you asked me for some numbers from the U.S. Census Bureau. And I, I, Mr. Sampson made me a nice map, which I included in my staff report. And you can see throughout the townships, some, it, some of the townships would actually surprise you, such as Midary Township seeing a decrease in population. They lost six people. It's not like it's, not like it's a humongous thing, but still they did see a decrease. Some townships got hit pretty hard. Brookings Township is one of them and Oak Lake. And then you've got the, the winners of the, of the game such as Lake Hendricks. They saw an increase of twenty-six percent. Lakethan is a, is a, it's a hidden one. And Lakethan Township itself saw a, a small decrease of six individuals. But the Lake Ponset area itself saw an increase. So, and one thing that this does not show is the Hutterite colonies. If we was un- undercounted anywhere in Brookings County, it was our Hutterite colonies. And I don't know how to, how to fix that. Well, this year obviously you can't fix it because it happened last, last year. But, uh, so we, we, if we was undercounted anywhere, it would have been the Hutterite colonies, just from the numbers that I saw. But theoretically, they should be included in the township numbers. And the townships that most of them are in didn't get hit real hard. So. Any questions on the numbers herself? And I think all, we also had the map that showed the, the small towns that we, we discussed.
Bob, when you, on the township map, if we could have that back up for a minute, that does not include in, that's outside of municipalities. Is that correct?
That would include, yes ma'am.
And then does it include Lake Park District?
Yes.
It does include that, but not municipalities?
Yes.
So in Brookings Township and in Volga Township, would, would those decreases be attributable to how much annexation the two cities have done during the last decade?
Definitely in Volga.
Mm-hmm.
Because they've got those, those subdivisions there. And Aurora, again, you know, the city of Aurora, you can, you can see the difference there just by looking at like the, the city of Aurora. I mean, the township of Aurora only saw one point, one point three six percent increase. But if you look at the municipality map, the city of Aurora jumped up eighty-nine point one percent. So, yeah. The census numbers concentrate on the, on the non-municipal areas. And, and the reason we, we think the Hutterite colonies are undercounted is they, 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 they put out a little thing on, on different numbers and, and they call them, uh, areas or something. And it just looked like they was low, low to me. But, so next year, I've been in Brookings County now for three census. I was, um, a college student working part-time in twenty, in two thousand when we had the census. In two thousand ten, obviously I was the main planner. In two thousand twenty, I was a planner. I don't know if I'll be around for the twenty, thirty census or not, but hopefully I'll leave a note for my predecessor to make sure that they hit those Hutterite colonies nice and hard and, and there's ways of accessing them. But it, it may not be just to walk in the front door and knock on the door. You may have to go through different agencies to get in there. And that's something I would, you know, if, if there was an after-action report on this twenty, twenty census for me, that's what it would be after, after seeing the numbers. Now, when they was here, they did the best they could. They contacted our office and asked for where people live and all that. So. Any other questions on the census itself? And other than that, I'm gonna go, go on the radio. It is this week's National Preparedness Week thing is to prepare a kit. And if anything, if you get anything from the news in the last week with that hurricane that hit Louisiana, if you had a five gallon pail next to your front door and you got water starting to come in your front door, if you'd have grabbed that five gallon pail and took off, at least you have medicine for, for a couple of days and things like that. That's, that's the message for this week that I'm gonna go on the radio and push. Prepare a kit. I don't care what your kit's got in it, the stuff that you need for you and, and your family. Put it in a five gallon bucket, put a lid on it. You know, you can, you can use it to sit on if you have to, if you're in an emergency shelter. I realize Brookings, we're pretty, we, we think we're in a bubble and we, we don't get affected by these things. But look at my staff report. I mean, we sent out severe weather warnings in the past month. We've had, we've had severe rain at one time. We had two and three inches in portions of the county. We didn't have it throughout. The problem is we haven't had it in the whole county. It's always hit and miss. Our hell, thank goodness, has been pea-sized hell basically, you know? But there's been places in South Dakota that has had golf ball-sized hell, if not larger, in the last, last month. So it's coming. That's all I can say. And of course, I've been saying that now for twenty-something years. And I guess I'll keep saying it until I retire. So, any other questions? Thank you.
Marty?
Morning.
Morning.
Stacy, do we want to go over the meal plans? Okay, in your packets, you probably had the, uh, the food bid comparisons. And I guess at this time, uh, we're recommending to, for Trinity. But, uh, has, has the commissioners had a chance to review those comparisons? With Trinity, it's the, so far, as of the three bid comparisons, Trinity came in, um, the cheapest per inmate meal. And as you can see, as inmates increase, you know, and I predict that our daily average after we open up for contracts to be around that sixty to sixty-five. It comes down quite a bit, uh, also. Uh, the more inmates you got, the more, or the less cost per day and so forth. Uh, Trinity, uh, is, is in Yankton. And then I followed up with Yankton to ask how, how they like Trinity and, and they have no issues with Trinity. Consolidated is in, uh, or Summit, I should say Summit. That's in more, uh, places in, in South Dakota. But again, their prices are higher. And consolidated, consolidated, uh, the only other place is Watertown. But they were, they were higher too. So Trinity is what we're looking at right now. Because we have an offer, it's gonna have to be, if you're, they got the consensus to go ahead, then we'll offer them a contract or to write us a contract, and then we'll present that to you for approval. So if you have any questions.
Are these annual bids that get renegotiated every year or is it a three-year contract?
This is a three-year. We went for a three-year.
Okay.
So we're locked in for those prices for three years. See, what we have to decide is if we're gonna go with three hots or a cold, hot, hot. So you can see they have the differences between, you know, the breakfast is cold and then you got two hots. And then you have three hots. So there's a difference in prices there too. Um, you know, right now, we've basically just have one hot. We have, sometimes we'll have two hots, noon. But the supper is always a hot right now. But a lot of times we have two hots and then, so.
Would they be cooking the meals then in our kitchen?
Yes.
So they, and that thirty-five thousand dollar equipment fund?
That's for if, if we need anything extra.
It's free. They don't, it's, it's almost looks like a gift.
That's thirty-five thousand of their money or thirty-five thousand of our money?
Their money.
Theirs?
Okay. So they'll supply trays and that sort of thing?
Anything, any of that that we need.
They're not just gonna give us thirty-five thousand, but if there's anything extra that we need, that we don't have now, that'll come out, come out of that.
Which means I wouldn't have to have that thirty-five coming out of the soft cost right now.
That makes sense.
Can you clarify a little bit for us what the trustee, without trustee and with trustee component of that spreadsheet is?
The, the trustees would be, uh, trustees that we would get from our jail.
Okay.
It'd be inmate work.
Okay.
Um, the nice thing with, uh, well, I think all of, Al, for some of it in some way, is they, they train the inmate as well while they're in the kitchen working. So they got some food service experience while they're in there, which can help once they get released and back on the street too.
We're gonna have to have policy on that. Who is that? Not everybody's gonna qualify for trustee. And then there's some, uh, it's all gonna be in policy. They can't be by themselves. They will not deliver the meals. Staff is gonna have to deliver the meals. And that's pretty much the standard everywhere because if you have trustees delivering the meals, sometimes they give their buddies a little extra something. And so it's.
Is there an idea how many they need or?
Normally two, two.
And as part of the, as part of that three-year contract, are there guidelines specifically to what kind of dietary requirements there?
Yep. And they furnish that.
Okay.
So we don't have to worry. That's part of the, the bid packages. They furnish the dietitian. So. Where now we, we go out, outside to, to get, which is a separate contract for, for dietitian.
How do these rates compare with what we're currently paying?
Currently, we're paying twenty-two seventy-five per day for three meals per inmate. The, uh, per day with the three hots with inmate help would be thirteen forty-seven for three meals per inmate, per day. It's a nine twenty-eight savings. Uh, on a year, if we, and I just did a quick figure on thirty-five inmates, what we've been averaging for a year, that is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars difference from what we're paying now. The thing too with, with Hy-Vee is no matter, even if we went with a three-year contract, they always increase the meal amounts per year. Hy-Vee did not, uh, bid on this one. There was only three companies that bid. So I'm not sure, you know, where it would have went if they, if they would have bid.
But again, as, as the inmates increase, prices come down. Of course, when we open up the contracts, that'll be part of the per-day bill to the, to the county that, that contracts with us too, is to pay for meals.
And so as part of the contract, does this include everything they, their dietitian puts together the meals, they buy the stuff, and they clean the kitchen when the meals are done? They do?
Yes. Yep.
Beginning to, yeah.
Yep. We have certain responsibilities, um, you know, for cleaning the exhaust and different things like that, but that's.
This looks exactly like we had planned it would look for providing meals for the inmates. So I, I, I have no problem with Trinity's, uh, uh, offering them a contract to see what, what come up with.
And Yankton doesn't get a lot of complaints from the inmates?
No, no. They said that, uh, and, uh, they like, uh, I mean, they like Trinity. I mean, they've not had any issues. But they gave us some, I, I talked to the jail administrator and he gave me a lot of good ideas on how to, how to, how to write policy and, and different things on, and some things to do on the screenings of trustees and things. So. So we'll come forward with a, with a contract then for, for approval.
Is everybody okay with that?
If that's okay with you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, is that we're, we're looking to, um, go ahead and, increase the full-time staff to three full-time October first. And I guess, I'm just looking to make sure that that's okay to move forward with that. We have three that are ready. We have one that's out of state that, so she needs to give her resignation and so forth. So she, she's coming back. So she's gonna be a good employee for us. Okay, other than that, I, I'll talk a little more later. But, yeah, you guys have any questions?
No.
The only other question is, and I, and I missed it if, if you talked about it this morning with, with the Detour, sixteen, six, Sixteenth Avenue is getting a lot of traffic too. And I don't know really what the condition of that, that road is, but I got a couple of complaints over the weekend that, 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 uh, they're driving fast down there. But it's, it's posted at fifty-five. So, you know, it's, that's where that young lady got killed, um, a few years ago. So a neighbor's kinda concerned about that. So I don't know if, if, if they're using that a lot, if, if we can run down that road at, at all for grading there, push it onto the township. I, but we'll watch it. Um, we'll try to monitor the, the speed down there and stuff like that. I don't think they brought, they talked about bringing the speed down because that's such a, kind of a swampy road that, that whatever they do, it doesn't last long. Put gravel in and they grade it, it don't last long. But, but I guess the, uh, they're using that quite a bit. So I'll work with Brian and see what, okay.
Good.
Just for, in case you guys get complaints, you know, we're, we're looking at it already. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more documents that we need to share with? Uh, move on to regular business. Item number thirteen. Number A, action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash ninety-four. A State of South Dakota Department of Public Safety Office of Emergency Management, twenty-twenty-two Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. Have motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments, Bob?
This is our yearly plan from the State of South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. On this one, it's actually relaxing our exercise agreements. We, in the past, we had to do full-scale exercises once a year. Now they're using a little common sense and allowing us to do a, the way you should be doing exercises in the beginning in, anyway, is to do a tabletop, then a functional, and then a full-scale. So they're allowing us to start on a three-year cycle for exercises. Other than that, it's basically about the same. And they're, they never commit how much money they're gonna give us in the beginning of the thing. We, we do our best estimate and put it into the budget every year. So it's beneficial to the county in my opinion, and I recommend your approval.
Any questions, Bob? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item B, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash ninety-five. A Guardian RFID system agreement. Have motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
This is the sheriff's office agreement. Um, this is a, uh, for inmate management monitoring, tracking in the new jail.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash ninety-six. A South Dakota Department of Transportation Agreement for Use and Restoration of Detour and/or Wet Weather Detour. Have motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
Uh, this is the detour round for the bridge south of town, the Sinai Bridge.
Any questions anymore? Call the roll, please.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash ninety-seven. Applications for occupancy of right-of-way county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Trenton Township. Have motion approved.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
Underground to a farm.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash ninety-eight. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highway made by Brookings Dual Rural Water System in Brookings Township. Have motion approved.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item F, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash ninety-nine. An application for occupen- occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Brookings Dual Rural Water System in Sterling Township. Have motion approved.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item G, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one zero zero. An application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Interstate Telecommunications Co-op in Lakethan Township. Have motion approved.
So moved.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
Um, these are just the, a series of them. Um, they're going to be extending some of their fiber optic, uh, reaches, I guess.
And they're well aware that if any work in townships need to have township approval.
I guess I only cover what comes to me. Um, I know that we'll be looking at a variety, later on down here with Valley Telecommunications, and they requested that I approved in townships. But I separate out, um, each particular, uh, county road. And I only bring to you guys forward the ones that are on our county highway system, our primary, primary county highway system. Uh, the, the applications that you see here are only covering our primary.
Reason I bring that up, I did have a couple of complaints last week, and those were township issues. I called Brian. He clarified with them also that they need to get approval from township. So.
Do you have a motion in a second on item G? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item H, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one zero one. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Interstate Telecommunications Co-op in Lakethan Township. Have motion approved.
So moved. Second.
Motion of second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item I, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one zero two. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op. Have motion approved.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item J, action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash one zero three. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op. Have motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item K, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one zero four. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op. Have motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item L, action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash one zero five. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op. Have motion approved.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item M, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one zero six. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op. Have motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item N, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one zero seven. Application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op. Have motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item O, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one zero eight. Uh, FMV lease agreement between Brookings County and Dakota mailing for lease of a postage machine. Have motion to approve.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
Our lease was up on the postage machine that we have here for the county. Um, this is just a new, new lease agreement for a new postage machine.
Stacy, what, what does that machine do for us that we're paying three hundred and some dollars a month for it?
It allows us to post all of our mail right here in the building. Um, and then qualified presort comes and picks it up. It also allows us to put that lowered, that lower rate that qualified presort accepts. That goes right through, um, can program the machine and it prints that postage rate right on the mailing. It does save us money. It saves us trips to the post office. We're not buying stamps. So it's, we're doing everything in-house. It gets picked up right here every day.
And where, where does that sit? Is that up in your area?
Yeah, in our workroom next to, right off Michelle's space.
And do all the departments, all the county departments in the building use that?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item P, action approved change order number zero zero seven for the detention center remodel and expansion project in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Still have motion approved.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
In my staff report, I'm, I sort of parsed out what all of that dollar amount looks like. The lar- uh, the largest portion of that, seventeen thousand five twenty-five, was for the addition of some smoke dampers. Um, we did get some, a credit, uh, to, of about thirteen hundred dollars on detention pricing, uh, credit, which is. Uh, credit, which is going to go to the contingency of about twenty-five hundred dollars for some brick support at the east wall of the existing detention center for the new construction. Sixty-eight hundred dollars for the addition of expansion joint assemblies at east and west pre-cast for existing joints. Um, just over twelve hundred dollars for additional FRP at east wall around the dishwasher, dishwasher. And then we have a credit to contingency of about fifty-five hundred for just miscellaneous pre-cast opening cuts for utilities.
Any questions?
Um, those smoke dampers, was that due to a change that occurred or did someone forget that in the documents to begin with?
I think that was, um, forgotten and added in later.
So noted.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item Q, action approved Argyle Township's culvert grant application in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
So this is actually, um, two different culvert projects that they are requesting, um, assistance with through our, through our grant program. I know Brian has been out and looked at both of these sites, and they did go through the proper, um, procedure with having him come out, take a look, approve them ahead of time, and went and got that work done. Um, so this is a fifty percent match from, by the county. The total for the county would be eight thousand, five sixty-nine, thirty. And they did have all of the other documentation, which was included with, um, with quotes and, and their, and their costs. And estimates were there.
Stacy, did you say the work's already done?
No.
When are they planning on doing the work?
I would defer to Brian on that.
It was waiting for this approval. They have the culverts on hand, uh, but the work has not been done yet.
So it'll be done in twenty-one?
It'll be done, yeah, this year.
No other questions? Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item R, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expense incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County in the amount of four hundred and ten dollars for reimbursement for S D A A O school registration. Receipt number fif- five, six, four, eight, zero, three. General line, G L line, one oh one dash four dash one, six, two, dash four, two, seven, zero. Equalization. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Borzma.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item S, action approved paying ten thousand to the Brookings Economic Development Corporation to conduct a housing study of the smaller communities in Brookings County as part of their overall R F P. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Yeah, um, I was on this R F P there. This was started by the city of Brookings. Um, went through an R F P process to look at the housing, uh, do a housing study of the city of Brookings. Uh, they also added options to expand that study to Brookings County. And also an option to do studies of our surrounding, um, communities in Brookings County. Um, and so, um, the bill, or the cost came in really well. Um, total of forty-five thousand for the whole works. Um, the city of Brookings is, is paying thirty-five of the forty-five. Um, so the upgrade for adding Brookings County, whole county and the, and, uh, the smaller communities was ten thousand dollars. And so I thought that was very reasonable, so that's why I brought it here for your consideration, for us to take that portion of the, of the forty-five thousand on. Um, the contract will be with Brookings Economic Development, so we will reimburse them of the ten thousand dollars, uh, after the work. And then we will have access to all the numbers and everything like that, that we can work there too, so. Um, if this does pass, I was gonna, I was talking to Stacy that maybe we could also send a letter out to the communities where they will be doing the, the searches. Identified as White, Walga, Aurora, and I need to double-check on Elkton and Arlington. Um, for sure there, we're not doing anything smaller than that as of right now. Most of those all have schools and, and things like that in there. And so, um, it, those were the ones we identified for, uh, to do the housing study. But I'd like to send a letter out, if we could, to those communities, explain, you know, what's going on. That there'll be people, name the people that'll be coming and asking, looking for numbers of, uh, and different things like that. And hopefully they would cooperate with them and there's no charge to them.
No charge to the small communities?
Yeah, no charge to the small communities. I, I just think that, you know, if you're going to do a study, uh, you know, there's a lot of housing in these smaller communities that, uh, provide workforce housing and, and, uh, and it's important to get, I think, a, a list of everybody for all of Brookings County to see where we at in our housing. Um, it's just not the city of Brookings anymore. Uh, I think it's a lot of Brookings County and those smaller cities too that really contribute to it. So I think it'd be really good information if ten thousand was spent, so.
Will they be looking at the census information then since we just got?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I know in the past, B D C had done some housing studies and so had the city, and some of the issues we had were, uh, landlords in particular not wanting to report their, uh, occupancy rates or their, their ability to that. Is this, this particular company have any success rating getting landlords to release that information?
Yeah, and we brought that up, and that was one of our major questions to all. We interviewed three, and all of them, we had to ask that question. And, and, uh, that, that is not uncommon and when they're doing these housing studies. So they will, uh, continue to try to do the best they can to get that information. But you're exactly right, and that was identified last time.
Good, because I think that's an important component of this. It's the, the accuracy of the information relies on that participation and possibly even a letter from the county commission to these, uh, landlords in the other communities that, that we're controlling. Uh, part of it is please, please cooperate if, uh, if you can.
And I mean, I would think that whatever non-disclosure agreements would be required by the consulting team in order to ensure that that information is proprietary and stays private, doesn't end up releasing names of landlords in any part of that data would be super helpful in, in terms of getting further cooperation.
I know that we had those previously too, it just didn't seem to matter. So, uh, but, uh, you know, things, times have changed, and I think we could probably get some of that cooperative effort now.
Okay, no other comments? Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It is nine fifteen. Um, item A and a scheduled agenda items, public hearing and action to approve resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-nine. An adoption of the twenty-twenty-two provisional budget for the Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have an open, a motion and a second. Uh, at this time, I'd like to open public hearing. Do we have any proponents that would like to speak to this? Any proponents? Hearing none. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing. Any additional comments?
The provisional budget was included in your packet. Um, this is, really no changes have been made since we reviewed this. I think back in July was probably the last time we, we really dug into this and took a look at it. Um, I know there will be some changes between this budget and the annual budget. We had some utility numbers come in, so that'll make some small, minor changes. Um, and we'll present those when we, uh, approve the annual budget at the next meeting on the twenty-first. But otherwise, this is, um, the budget as, as, you know, as we worked through that budget session back in June and I think kind of into July. This is, this is it. We haven't made any changes to it since then, so.
Let me call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Back to regular business, uh, discussion and possible action on appraisal process for a motor grader that has been declared as surplus property. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments?
Go ahead, Jenna. Okay. Um, so our office was approached by the highway department. Um, they would like to sell the twenty-thirteen cat motor grader by sealed bid instead of the public auction. So in doing, in doing that, if we do it by a sealed bid rather than a public auction, then we need to go through, um, the appraisal process. And so, South Dakota Code of Law six dash thirteen dash two, uh, states uh, that the governing board shall appoint three real property owners of the political subdivision to appraise the value of such property. If you go down a couple lines, it does say that you, uh, may employ a person or somebody that's licensed to do so. Um, I kind of dug back, uh, Stacy and I kind of dug back to the last time that you guys have done this process. And I think the last time the commission did a process like this was when you hired three, or excuse me, when you hired, uh, a professional to do the property in Sinai, when they went to go, to go sell that. So instead of, instead of, uh, using three real property owners, you chose to hire, um, an, an appraiser to, to do that, to do a fair market analysis. But this is a cat motor grader, so I don't know if it's something you guys want to hire out to do to see what, uh, to see what the appraisal would be. Or, um, you know, if we, if you appoint three people that have some knowledge in it. So, that would be that.
Why are we doing sealed bids instead of public auctions?
We have a guaranteed number of a hundred and sixteen thousand, uh, offered by R D O if we go through this process.
I, I guess, I'm just curious because I think public auction is always the better way myself. Is there a reason that we don't, um, offer it online, using our online process for public auction, which would qualify, is that right, Jenna? And see if we get a bid in excess of the hundred and sixteen thousand?
I guess, the way that it's written in the comments on the investment proposal that was approved earlier this year, um, with the purchase of a deer grader, R D O equi- equipment company will guarantee a surplus bid on the one forty M two with wing and hitch. Surplus bid with sealed bids is a hundred and sixteen thousand. Surplus bid with online bids is to one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and forty. So we're talking roughly, they guarantee an online bid, but, uh, of about thirteen thousand difference. So I guess if we wanted to go through this process, we're guaranteed thirteen thousand more. Or we're only guaranteed a hundred and three, uh, with the online.
So is, is your recommendation is to appoint three people to give us a qualified price?
That would be my recommendation, and talking with, uh, Jenna, you know, one of them could be me. Could be a commissioner, or two commissioners. Is that correct?
Yeah, I reached out with another, uh, with another auditor, um, close by and, and talked about this process because I haven't been a part of this process before of going this type of route versus the public auction. Um, but yeah, as she said, the, the three people that they typically appoint to, to praise certain equipment is, um, they use somebody from the board. Um, you know, one of their commissioners, they also utilize the highway superintendent because they have a lot of knowledge in that type of equipment and what it would sell for and that sort of thing, so. Um, and then their lead foreman as well in the highway department.
I guess that would suggest it be Larry, myself, and, and Brian.
These are three.
Is, is a quote in there, is one has to be a private citizen or not?
It just says, excuse me, the state statute says, uh, real property owners. So I, and I would think that all three of you own, I mean, you're property owners, correct? So it, to me, it would fall within the statute.
And our mechanism for soliciting sealed bids from other individuals on this, do we, do we feel like there's a decent pool of interest for a piece of property like this?
The equipment, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we would go, we would advertise for sealed bids just like we would anything else. Um, but yeah, I guess I can't answer that question.
It's kind of a Brian.
Yeah.
Question, maybe. I don't.
It's, it'd be advertised in our locals, you know, our, our legal papers.
I was involved with one of these many years ago, and, uh, I think we had a couple private contractors that gave us a price and then a private citizen. And I don't really feel comfortable saying a price on something that the county owns. Basically our equipment, what I feel it's worth. You want, I mean, true value to somebody else, I mean. But.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I guess, I wasn't thinking that we would put our price of our own, on our own property. I, I would think that you would go out and have somebody that has some knowledge of, uh, these graders and have an idea of what the value might be and give you an opinion. Um, you know, I guess I'm more in the real estate business and we get market evaluations for, from other people, from other agents, uh, that will give you an idea of what the value of that property is. I have an idea, but may not be right. So we could turn around and get Brian's, you know, idea of what he feels it's worth. But I think it'd be prudent to have two other people that might be involved, have knowledge of this. And no disrespect to you or to you, but I know, I would have zero knowledge of what this thing is worth. And, uh, and I'm just wondering that if we'd have better numbers if we went and did it that way. Um, just, I, I think you could put an arbitrary number on it and just to satisfy it and then send it out. I don't know if that's what it's meant to do. I'm not sure that's the intent of getting three, you know, numbers by just us putting three numbers on it.
I don't understand how this would work. So we get our, our, um, three appraised values. And we gotta, and we'll advertise for sealed bids. And R D O has a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar offer if we do sealed bids. Okay, so if we get an offer for a hundred and twenty thousand in our sealed bids and our appraisal was a hundred and fifty thousand, I'm just making those numbers up. What do we do?
Then if you said if it's a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Then the commission would have to decide if they would accept that.
Okay. So why wouldn't we do our public auction online like we do with everything else? If we don't get an offer that's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars or more, then we can always come back to this. But I, I don't understand, I'm, I'm concerned about getting enough word out to people to bid on it, first of all. And, and what happens when we get those sealed? We, so we have three different things going on then. We've got a sealed bid, we've got our appraised value, and we've got R D O's offer of a hundred and sixteen thousand. And so, that doesn't seem very smooth to me, but.
Sorry. We also have a guaranteed number of online bid, uh, of a hundred and three thousand, two forty. So I mean, we're also guaranteed that if we, if you guys would want to go that route.
But when we do the public auction, we could put a no-sale price of a hundred and sixteen thousand on it, right?
But i- if you go that route, will this hundred and sixteen thousand bid go away? If we go public auction?
Yeah, because, uh, it's stated right in the investment proposal that surplus guaranteed with sealed bid is a hundred and sixteen thousand. that surplus guaranteed with sealed bid is a hundred and sixteen thousand. So that would be out the door and the online bid would be on there of a hundred and three thousand, two forty.
That's their guarantee, that's not what they're, that's not what their max willing to offer though. Because if there does happen to be a bidding war, because we've generated a lot of great interest, whatever that looks like, I don't know on a motor grader. It, it could be higher than that. And frankly, if you talk to other implement dealers who deal with motor graders and their appraised value is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and sixteen thousand doesn't look that great to us perhaps as a guaranteed minimum.
Plus nothing there says that we can't do both. That we can't do the public auction, say, hey, we don't want that, we're going to do sealed bids because we rejected all the offers we got, now we're going to do sealed bids. And then that phrase would come into play. I don't see anything there that doesn't give us the right to do it either way.
I guess in the intent was either, either or, either or. If you go this way, this one's off the table now that you can't turn around and try to do both and keep them there. But I, I, I wonder about the ability to get, the amount of sealed bids we get with just our normal advertising. If we do the online auction, I mean, that has potential for us to sell it to a, a county in Minnesota or Iowa or Nebraska that may get online and bid rather than watching our local advertising. And that's what concerns me is the ability to get uh, you know, uh, bidders just on the sealed bids because it just staying so local. And so, I, I, I'm leaning towards the auction. And you see what you can get, you advertise there and, and let the, let the market decide what the value of it is. Um, but you have to, to do that, it needs to get out. It has to get out to a regional group of area, not just our local, in my opinion, so.
Is that what you do on the public auctions Jenna?
Are you recommending that we do the, are you recommending to do the pub, the online public auction?
That, that, well, what have we done in the past on, on them is on, most of our personal property or, or equipment, we've done an online.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think the
That, there's, isn't there websites that specialize in this type of equipment? What's that called? What is it called?
Iron Planet or Purple Wave.
Oh, Purple Wave.
But I mean.
And I don't know, it just seems like.
This hundred and sixteen was very surprising to me when Brian told me because I thought this was a very good price for the piece of equipment, but. I don't know what, what the average price of, I haven't looked them up lately, but I thought this was pretty good, but.
You know, every piece of equipment's obviously different, but I, I thought myself it was a very reasonable price also. But either way, uh, you know, the number that they, they also put forward as far as the online goes is, you know, not bad either. So. That's fine too.
What do they charge? What does like Iron Planet charge? Don't they charge a commission?
So we do the, the public surplus. It, it is no cost to us. Um, the buyer of the item gets charged an additional ten percent. And that goes straight to public surplus that does everything, they facilitate the whole um, everything. But there's no cost to us. Um, we would just have to advertise in the papers that the online sale would start this date and this date at this time. You know, we could list it at a one sixteen and even do a reserve of a hundred and three, you know.
So now I'm figuring out the, the reason that there's one oh three and one sixteen is that that buyer is going to have to pay ten percent, so they're probably willing to pay one sixteen, but ten percent's going to the auction house.
Mm-hmm.
Ten thousand bucks, eleven thousand dollars.
Can we uh, hold this for a little bit? We do have a nine thirty and we can come back to this. Sorry to interrupt. We do have a scheduled nine thirty. Item B under scheduled agenda items. Um, second reading, public hearing and action to approve ordinance number twenty one dash zero five and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty one dash zero two. An ordinance establishing a county housing and redevelopment commission for the administration of the HUD section eight. Existing certificate, voucher, moderate rehabilitation, and other related housing programs. Do I have motion approved?
I'll move.
Second.
At this time, I would open the public hearing.
We have to have the second reading. Do you want me to read the ordinance?
Yep.
Okay. Be it ordained by the county commission of, of county of Brookings, South Dakota as follows. To wit, Article one, Brookings County Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Section one, created. There is hereby created and established in and for the county of Brookings, a county housing and redevelopment commission to administer, contract, control, and supervise HUD. Section eight, existing certificate, voucher, moderate rehabilitation, and other related housing programs through the use of municipal, county, and federal funds, and to exercise any and all powers conferred by SDCL chapters eleven dash seven and eleven dash seven A. Section two, composition and appointment. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be composed of five commissioners. The members shall be made up of at least one resident of the city of Brookings, at least one resident that resides outside the city of Brookings and one county commissioner. The members shall be appointed by the chairperson of the chair, board of county commissioners with the approval of the county commission. Section three, terms. The members shall be appointed to five-year terms beginning January first of each year. Each vacancy in an, in an unexpired term should be filled in the same manner in which the original appointments were made. Section four, ex officio members. The Brookings County State's attorney or their appointed designee shall be assigned as an ex officio member of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Section five, meetings. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall hold meetings as necessary to complete such businesses from time to time may come before it. Official meetings shall be in accordance with SDCL one dash twenty-five dash one. Special meetings may be called at any time by the chairperson by giving at least twenty-four hours advance notice in accordance with SDCL one twenty-five, one point one. Section six, quorum of commission officers and rules. Powers of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be vested in the commissioners thereof in office at any time, a majority of whom shall constitute a quorum for all purposes. Each commission shall select a chairperson, a secretary, and a treasurer from among its commissioners who shall hold their offices respectively for one year and until their successors have been appointed. The commission shall adopt such bylaws and other rules for the conduct of its affairs as it deems appropriate. Section seven, expenses of commissioners. No commissioner shall receive compensation for their services, but each commissioner shall be entitled to receive necessary expenses, including traveling expenses incurred in the performance of their duties based upon current state rates. Section eight, commission is body corporate general powers. The Housing and Rela- Redevelopment Commission shall be a public body corporate and polit- exercising public and essential governmental functions and shall have all the powers necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes set forth herein together with the powers granted by SDCL chapter eleven dash seven and eleven dash seven A inclusive. But the commission shall not have the power to levy or collect taxes or special assessments. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall have the power and authority to superintend, manage, administer, and control federal housing programs within its jurisdiction, including the power to contract with individuals, public or private firms to administer said housing program on behalf of the commission. Section nine, collection of funds. All funds and revenues derived from the operation of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission may be collected by the Brookings County Finance Office or such other officer as shall be appointed by such commission. Section ten, reporting. In accordance with SDCL eleven dash seven dash one oh six, the commission shall keep an accurate account of all of it, all of its activities and all of its receipts and expenditures, and shall annually in the month of January make a report thereof to the Auditor General and to the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners. Article two, this ordinance is intended to amend ordinance twenty one dash oh one. To the extent as such ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance, it is hereby repealed. All other ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. This ordinance is based upon resolution ninety one dash ten adopted by the Brookings County Board of Commissioners on March nineteenth, nineteen ninety-one and resolution ninety one dash eleven adopted by the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners on April second, nineteen ninety-one. The housing needs addressed in those resolutions continue today and those resolutions remain in effect. It will be dated this seventh day of September, twenty twenty-one. Published on the sixteenth of September and effective date Wednesday, October sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. That is the second reading. Do I have a motion approved?
So moved.
I have a motion in the second already, yeah.
Okay. Look, to open the public hearing. Is there any proponents that would like to speak to this issue? Any proponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing none, like to close the public hearing? Call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Get back to discussion on the possible appraisal process for motor grader. Ryan, I interrupted you.
Yeah, I guess the, I'm understanding why the bid is lower. Basically, they're probably willing to give us a hundred and sixteen and we would save that ten percent. So the county would keep that ten percent if we decided to do a sealed bid rather than sending it to there. So I guess we have to weigh where would, where would we be ahead? If, could we get that ten percent paid for because our bids are better because we're out further in the region and getting a better price? Uh, or do we just handle it and keep it as, you know, do our regular advertising and take the one sixteen and if we get more, we get more.
And I would think that when this contract was negotiated, the one sixteen would be trade-in value and not fair market value. I, I'm unaware of, of entities when they're selling things like this that they give you what they think they're going to sell it for. So I have to believe that that road grader is worth more than a hundred and sixteen thousand or they wouldn't have offered us a hundred and sixteen thousand for it because they wouldn't make any money off the resale.
Is there a limited time on the hundred and sixteen thousand dollar sealed bid? No. Would somebody like to make amendment to the motion?
Do we have a motion on this one?
Discussion and possible action presently.
We got a recommendation.
There was already a motion and a second made, I believe.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second made on an appraisal process for a motor grader that has been declared a surplus property. That would be the motion.
That we could vote.
If we go through the appraisal process, I do think we should try to see if we can get a couple other appraisers that have knowledge of what they might be worth or, you know, that use them, that own them. And if they're looking online, they could look and, and see if we could get a, a letter from them. I guess the process where it gets to be an issue is if you don't get those three appraisals then, or it takes you a long time, you know, then that's part of the, you know, part of the timing of it too.
At the time before, we had two contractors and the city street superintendent gave us appraisals.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts were, the reason I picked Larry and myself wanting, it's my department. But second to that is I have people I would call and uh, you know, get help on an appraisal process. I would try and use my own knowledge. I, I would do the research and, and come up with a reasonable. I would expect to be uh, accurate and I think Larry would too. So that's the reason I did that and we could do that pretty quickly.
So our, our advertising would consist of basically in our local papers?
Are you talking about for the sealed bid process?
Process. What would our advertising look like?
Yeah, we would do an advertisement for bids and we would put that in all four legal newspapers.
As well as our website.
Okay, yeah.
So then anybody who would get the bid notices would get that as well. Who signs up to get the bid notices would receive that information as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, on our website, it could be on there.
That feels like an incredibly limited pool.
What, I mean, what's our history of where their, where our sales are coming from? Because we've sold mostly through online websites. Most of our sales coming local or are they coming from Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska that they can come and get it?
I would say the, the bigger, the, the bigger items, the, the vehicles, those typically are coming from Nebraska, like the surrounding states. Um, dealerships are the ones that are looking for our police cars are usually the ones. Um, I think some of the past highway departments, yeah, they're coming from different states. Mm-hmm. I mean, we've had a few local people, but.
I guess I'm sort of in favor of the idea of the auction. In part because it widens the net and I don't know that there's any particular hurry that we have to, like, this doesn't have to be out of our possession by November first necessarily. Um, granted, I'm sure Brian would like to free up a little shop before we bring in new equipment. Um, but I don't know that there's any particular kind of speed or urgency that's a minimum requirement. And if the folks that are trying to get our equipment are typically out of state folks, I, I don't know that local advertising in a paper is going to do jack squat for getting us noticed in those circles.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the, to move forward with the pa- appraisal process for the motor grader. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Oppose?
No.
Motion failed. Item U. Well, we have to.
I think you need to either give direction or make a motion to go through the online process.
So I would make a motion that we um, surplus it via auction.
And we could put
We could put a minimum
A no sale price on it.
A no sale price on it as well if we choose.
You mean like an appraisal?
No, we could put a no sale of a hundred and sixteen thousand on it.
Okay.
They have a motion.
Does this require that hundred and sixteen thousand dollar sealed bid to rebid on our auction?
Yes.
Okay. I would say so.
Means nothing at this point. They could take it away and say, okay, our bid's a hundred thousand. We'll watch the price because the price on our online auction could deviate. We could end up with a hundred thousand.
And we could have a no sale, a minimum sale price on an online auction.
So we're going to place our no sale price high. And if we have a no sale offer of a hundred and ten, does it come back to us to say, okay, we'll take that? To the high bidder or not?
You have that flexibility Jenna?
I do, yeah.
Come back to us with whatever the high price was.
Yeah, I could do that.
So a no sale price really doesn't matter a heck of a lot.
Are we still char- are we charged for the listing if it ends up being a no sale?
It is no cost to the county whatsoever to utilize their website to sell our items. Yeah.
Yep, I have a motion.
So yep, I have a motion by Borzma, seconded by Krogman.
All right, did the motion state, did the motion state our no sale price?
No.
I mean, we have to
The motion that I had was just to sell the item via public auction.
All right.
Public online auction.
You've talked about a, a no sale price. What do you want it to be?
I think we just decided that what Jenna's going to do is she's going to wait for the highest bid and come tell us what it is and we're going to say yea or nay. Is that right Jenna? Is that what you understood?
Yeah, I'll work with Brian on the price on. Yeah, I'll work with Brian on the price on, um, what we'll set the bid price at with a reserve of like, this is what, this is the, the lowest that we would accept. Is that okay? And then we can start the bidding at whatever and then.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to sell, uh, a motor grader by online auction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. We have a nine forty-five, uh, scheduled agenda item. Jordan Brown, East River Electric, discussion on power poles for the Sinai Bridge. Like to come forward?
Okay, so.
Is your, can you make sure your mic is on? Okay.
All right, for the Sinai Bridge, we have to move our power lines. The contractor is putting his, uh, platform for his crane on the north side of the bridge. So it sounds like that extends out about thirty feet north of the bridge, which is our power lines are, I think, center line of our power line is at the thirty-five foot mark from center of roadway. So we'll have to move our lines so he can get his crane underneath there to set girders and do his, drive, drive his piling and build the bridge. So we are proposing to do that, we have to move five, five pole, or four poles. And we have to adjust one pole or two in the process so we can get our line angles out far enough to move our lines so our power lines aren't a concern for the crane. They'll still be a concern because he won't be able to swing all the way around, but at least he'll have free movement to do what he needs to, to the south. Do you guys want me to run through exactly what we're going to be doing or?
You've already, have you already reviewed the agreement? Basically, because of, it's a high tensile line, correct? Is that?
Yep, and it's, it's a larger line than, say, a distribution co-op. So just with that, it's, we can't bury it. It would be nice if we could bury it by and only have to move it once. But the trouble is that we have to move it and then when they're done with the bridge, we have to move it back. So that's why our labor and labor and equipment is so expensive. And down in that area, conditions can change very quickly. And that's when we have to start bringing tracked equipment up to try to, try to set these poles and remove these poles when we come back to do the work. So it's, ideally it'd be dry conditions and harder labor and equipment wouldn't be as expensive. But it's just, I hate to say that everything's going to go perfect and it ends up flooding, flooding when we come back and, and it makes it a big problem.
I think that was our main concern, why the cost was so high for relocation is.
Yep, and as far as like the material, we'll try to salvage as much as possible and when we come back and when we move it and when we move it back, try to salvage as much as possible and try to bring that back. I mean, take that off the cost of the relocation.
So the, the cost you have here is the max and it could be less than?
The cost here is just an estimate. Um, basically, we'll go through and, I mean, we have all of our costs out and we'll track exactly how much labor and equipment and everything we actually have involved in this. And then that'll be the cost that we send you guys. There's no profit or anything on any of this, so.
Any questions?
Process, this is over and above?
Right. Brian, do you have anything to add or?
Yeah, the price shocked me to begin with. Um, I also talked with the contractor about why he would want his pad on the north side and not the south side. And, and obviously, uh, they have to follow their requirements as far as OSHA. And talking with him, obviously, if they put it on the south side, their crane is going to be, you know, could possibly tip into the lines. That's why it is on the north side. It's majority of the work's going to be south of the crane. Or south, or their crane will be facing south, so it did make sense. But I guess it, it's was part of the process that I would hope that in the future, that if we would have this, we would be, you know, looking at this a little bit different. And I know that, um, East Rivers changed hands. And when I first contacted them last year, uh, in regards to, you know, hey, we're going to be working on this. I don't believe Jordan was employed, so I think it's a learned. I guess, in my opinion, uh, speaking with the contractor and knowing that their utility is outside the right of way, I guess, uh, it does end up lying on our shoulders to pay for.
Well, before us, we have action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash ninety-three of Brookings County Force Account Agreement Utility between Brookings County and East River Electric Power Cooperative Incorporated. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Back to item U, action to approve, a request to fill vacancy for an appraiser in the equalization department. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item V, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a temporary deputy sheriff. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I don't have any comments other than I'd just like approval to go ahead and advertise and try to fill that position and losing a deputy October first is getting deployed. I do have one deputy on maternity leave that will be back, uh, at the end of, uh, September. So kind of behind the eight ball a little bit, but I'm getting one back, so we'll, we'll make it work.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
I have one thing to ask, uh, if I could get a consensus of, of the board, is that I anticipate a resignation by the end of the week on a deputy sheriff that's going to go to the police department. He's been offered a conditional offer. And so it's going to be two weeks before I can come back to fill that. I was just wondering if, if we go ahead and advertise for the temporary position because it's going to be two advertisements, you know, temporary versus full-time. So I'd like to go ahead and start moving forward based on if he does put in his resignation at the end of the week, to go ahead and advertise for that, that position. Is that?
Problem with me.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Item W, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a GIS technician in the commission department. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Yes, I was really sorry to see this.
Jim is retiring at the end of the year. He gave me four months notice, which I very, very much appreciate. But yes, he's going to be missed, so.
And I imagine you already considered this, but I have to ask the question. Are there any adjustments in his job description now that we've, we've got more experience with GIS?
I've actually have, I've taken a look at it and, um, actually what you've presented, he's already looked at, so I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item fourteen, commission department director's report.
As part of my report, I attach in the city on the creation of TIF District Number Eleven within the city. That act, that hearing is, is tonight at five thirty. Um, you did receive also, uh, as part of my report, the official invitation from First District for their upcoming open house and picnic. That's later this month. This morning, I did hand out the exec, executive summary from Chad Nelson, our project manager, from Henry Carlson on the jail project expansion that you get each month from him. And I've given you, uh, kind of what's been going on the last month, what do you expect here, um, in September? And any changes to any dates and then, um, budget information there. Wondering if the township is interested. We did get officially one formal request from a township that wants, is requesting that the county do their culvert inventory as part, as part of kind of follow-up on our meeting that we had about a month ago now. Do you want me, and I can work with Brian, to draft a form, I think, to send out to each township saying, yes, we want the county to do it, no, check no, we're going to do it ourselves type of thing? And then have the sign-offs from all of the supervisors? Okay, I'll work with Brian to do that and I'll get that moving forward because now it's been a month and it's probably, as we get into harvest season, it's going to jump off everyone's radar for that. So I will work on that. Um, other than that, you have your list of upcoming dates. Thursday on, on number four, I need an RSVP for this one, the chamber luncheon with Senator Mike Rounds. I know I've heard from a couple of you. I know Commissioner Pierce. Anyone else plan to attend that one? I won't be here. No? Ryan, you said no, no? Okay. Okay, because now the chamber has a, a rule that you have to RSVP in advance to get your, your discounted price with your membership. So I need to know soon. Larry, do you know if you're? Okay. And then the other one is the, um, rescheduled, uh, event on Tuesday, the fifth, with Representative Dusty Johnson. And I know Leanne's planning on going to that one too.
If we're done with our commission meeting.
If, it is, it's a commission meeting Tuesday, so we'll have to, and I'll try to keep that in mind when I'm developing that agenda and hopefully we can be done and out of here in time for everyone to get there if you, if you so choose.
I am, I was planning to do that one if we're out of here on time.
Yeah.
And that's at eleven thirty, right?
Yep. Typically lunch is at eleven thirty and the presentation starts at noon. Mike, do you know yet?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay. Um, that's all I had unless you had any other questions for me.
Nope. Okay, moving on. State's Attorney's Office Report.
Commissioners know that for next week and the judges have opted to go back to COVID protocols. It's a class one felony, so there needs to be a hundred and twenty jurors called. And part of our concern is that we don't have adequate spacing at the courthouse. So we talked, uh, with Dustin, we're actually going to do it out at the Activity Center on Wednesday morning. We're going to seat a hundred and twenty in the, I think it's where they shoot the, uh, bows, um, in that area. Because we have to seat a hundred and twenty and they all have to be six feet in separation. This is going to save the county money because otherwise we were going to have to rent a room out at SwifteLLer, one of the hotel rooms. It's not unprecedented. This has been going on up in Cottington and Hughes County where they've been selecting jurors at alternative sites to accommodate social distancing. So this will actually be our first one, uh, that we're going to do this. So this would be, yeah, the fifteenth morning of, we'll select the jury and then we'll just have them, the, the thirteen, one alternate, come back to the, to the courthouse probably Wednesday afternoon. So not a real big deal. Um, happy he was able to accommodate us out there. But there's more than just one use out there, so it's, it's all good, but.
What date was that?
Fifteenth. Yeah, yep, next week. Yeah, he, he mentioned there might be one other event happening on the other end of the building, but the big space that we need will be open and available and we're scheduled, so.
Okay, item sixteen, commissioner reports. Commissioner Pierce?
On August eighteenth, we're meeting on Zoom and it was to listen to the legislative reports on the medical marijuana issues. On August twenty-fourth, I met with Paul Brazino and Steve Breitman and Dan Nelson and Bob Hill to discuss the licensing issue in the joint jurisdiction area. We had our meeting on that and you've heard what came out of that, that we really, the law is so gray in that area that we don't have things in place for joint jurisdiction to be able to, um, actually move forward with any cannabis establishments there. On August thirty-first, I attended the Optimus Respect for Law Enforcement Breakfast and Dave Beitler, Brookings County Deputy, received, uh, that award this year. That was very nice. On August thirty-first, I also went on the conservation tour with the rest of you, which is always an interesting event and I learn a lot about our county. On September second, I attended the legislative luncheon with, um, Senator Thune. And, um, I think everybody was there but Ryan. And he did say that he would watch for us to be doing some grant stuff on, on two fourteen. So that was a nice comment that he made. He phrased it a little bit differently there, but, but he did say that, that he would watch for that. And I have to say to Commissioner Borzma that she just did an outstanding job of moderating that luncheon and it all went well. That's my report.
Mr. Bartley?
All right, on the eighteen, pretty well attended. It, uh, was a long attended in a long time, uh, with the legislative, uh, reports on marijuana issues and other issues. It was a long meeting. On the thirty-first, uh, I also joined you at the Optimus Club. Congratulations, Dave, on Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. Uh, Optimus put on a great breakfast, I'll tell you that. It was, it was wonderful breakfast meal. Uh, also that afternoon, the conservation tour, which was always interesting to me. Uh, a lot of things going on out there in conservation areas and tree shelter builds and so forth that, you know, the, the normal person never knows is going on or never sees. And some of it's going, going on a long time and I've never seen it. So, uh, very interesting tour. On the twenty-sixth, the detention center meeting, uh, typical meeting. We went through several, several different, uh, subjects and obviously we reapproved some of those changes today. And on the second one, to, uh, Senator Thune's, uh, luncheon. And again, Angie, you did a great job. Thank you. Uh, it was a good meeting and that completes my report.
Ms. Krogman?
Uh, yes, uh, the twenty-fifth monthly beta meeting. Um, thirtieth, we had our BCOAC meeting. And, uh, also had Brookings Health meeting on the thirtieth. Obviously, COVID is, uh, rearing its ugly head again and, uh, Brookings Health is certainly making plans. Their thoughts are the next four weeks will really start to see a spike. So they're preparing accordingly and trying to work with, uh, my capacities for increased hospitalizations and also, uh, working with partner organizations to make sure there's, uh, space. and also, uh, working with partner organizations to make sure there's a space for everybody. So, um, they are in the planning stages for that. Uh, the thirty-first, I went to the Optimist Law Enforcement Breakfast. Congratulations to Dave, um, Law Enforcement Person of the Year. And then also, uh, the conservation tour, uh, went to that. Always love looking at that stuff and seeing all the CRP and the tree belts and all this stuff for a lot of life. It's pretty cool. I like it. I wish we could do more of it, but, uh, you know, it's, is what it is. A lot of stuff, times when it's government regulated, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. So I appreciate those landowners that jump through those hoops to, uh, to do what they like to do and, uh, I appreciate all their extra work they have to go through to, to work with those. Um, and then on the second, we had a beta capital committee meeting, um, and we went over our MOU, uh, that we're working with for, uh, Brookings School and then also, um, a grant, uh, application, our process, what we're working towards that. Um, the grant has not been, come out yet, so we're still waiting for that, but we do have a meeting planned tomorrow with Brookings School District to discuss their MOU, to see if we can get that, come to an agreement on that and get that signed, which will be a big, big deal for us when we do submit for the grant. That's it.
Mr. Boersma?
Um, August sixteenth, we had a BEDC board meeting. Being kind of final things for our first of three. Sessions that comes up this Thursday. Um, so probably have more to, to share after we get through some of those. The twenty-third, I had a NACO Next Gen Symposium Planning Meeting in preparation for our symposium, our two-day kind of Leadership and Economic Development component that will happen just prior to the Western Interstate Region Conference, um, in October. The twenty-fifth, had another BEDC meeting. Um, the thirty-first, also participated in the Optimist Law Enforcement Breakfast and again, congratulations to Dave Beitler. Also the Conservation District Tour, and now I know who to talk to if I wanna go pheasant hunting as a total rookie because I need all the help I can get. Um, and then on the second was part of the John Thune, um, luncheon and participated in the Connect Twenty-One Forty portion afterwards. Um, and all in all, it was a really good day. There's a lot of interesting conversation, everything from meatpacking to Afghanistan, net neutrality to trade and import tariffs and things like that. So, kind of a fascinating, um, spectrum of discussions that day. Well, pretty, um, pretty well attended for the Connect Twenty-One Forty portion. We had about twenty young professionals in the room for that, um, section. I, I hope to see a little stronger attendance on the other two as they come forward here, um, in the next month or so, but we'll see what happens. So, thanks.
Okay, on the eighteenth, uh, attended. Lengthy discussion on our cannabis issue within the state. Senator Bartles gave us a good, uh, talk there. Um, also the. Ships, uh, Stacy had quite a bit of input, uh, at the meeting and I would thank her for that. It's, you know, we've, went through the meeting, but there was other people there that, uh, from other counties that were gonna host similar meetings like we had and, uh, Stacy was able to help them out with how the discussion went, I guess, so. On the twenty-sixth, we had jail meeting that morning. Uh, moving along pretty good. Uh, things are really changing in there. Uh, twenty-seventh, had a meeting at Stacy's office with Angie. On the thirtieth, uh, BCOIC Advisory Board Meeting, uh, starting to pick up out there as fall comes forward. And in the next morning, at, uh, Optimist Breakfast, uh, Deputy Beitler, congratulate him again, and then also attended the conservation tour. And after the conservation tour, I sat in on the Conservation District Meeting. Um, some numbers were shared and it was, uh, kinda surprising to me. CRP acres that were, um, signed up and used as hay for emergency drought, the situation was, uh, just under ten thousand acres. It's, uh, pretty impressive. They had a hundred, I couldn't remember how many contracts they entered into, but they'd been very busy in that office. And then, uh, on the second, attended the legislative luncheon. And that would conclude my, uh, report.
Stacy, are we doing the county? In the morning? Is that still on?
Yes, I believe so. Yep, from eight to noon.
Okay, moving on. Item number seventeen, executive session. In accordance with South Court of Codified Law, one dash twenty-five dash two, propensity one, personnel. We have a motion to enter.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Moving to executive session.